Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call the July the sixth Town Council meeting to order. First item of business, of course, is the pledge of allegiance. Vice Mayor Jack Horton is going to lead us.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay. Has everybody had a chance to look the agenda over and vote on it? I do have one small change in the consent agenda, and that's a claim settlement policy. Just adding that on. Okay? All right. Will someone like to make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor? So the next item, of course, is the approval of the consent agenda. I think everybody's had a chance to look that over. Does anybody have any questions about the consent agenda? If not, we'll hear a motion to approve as presented.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Did anybody sign up for the public session? Okay. Did anybody want to speak to the council? Okay. We'll move on to new business. There's a resolution to adopt the clay making hazard mitigation plan. Mr. Sedsar, you want to report on that, sir?
Yes. So I actually started working on this plan pre-COVID, and it kind of got slowed down during COVID. But it is now a completed and in draft form and ready to be adopted. In your packet, you'll see a resolution from FEMA, which is a recommended language that they like to see when adopting these plans. We have one of these currently, and they have to be updated every five years. Ours is obviously a combination with Clay County, Macon County, and the municipalities in those counties. And just looking for how this plan adopted. I put a link in your to it in your agenda because it's over 360 pages.
I wondered if you wanted me to read it.
Yeah, we can read all of it tonight if you want.
Okay.
But it goes over a wide variety of hazard mitigation from storms, flooding, earthquakes, lightning, I mean, and how to address those.
So what's the upside to this? What's the downside?
A lot of it's just information. It's just, you know, proper planning, you know, as things evolved, you know, droughts. We had a major drought about four years ago, so there's sections on droughts and how to address those. Earthquakes, I mean, earthquakes at times, you know, were, it seems like they're getting a little bit more prominent in our region than they have in the past, so it just gives you some guidance on how to address that. There's also some criteria in there where we can make recommendations, us or other government entities to, for grant funding. If we list something in there, like one of the ones I've listed is updating some generators and transfer switches that our fire departments and our public works building. So with them being listed, then there it's option for grant funding because it's in a plan.
There's no real critique to this, right?
No, it's not regulatory. It's more information, but then you've, it's just like any other planning document.
I tried to digest all 360 pages of this. It's a doozy. I couldn't find where it really where it changes anything. It's just like if there's a sonic boom or a radio wave from space and knocks out electronics and tells you what you're supposed to do.
Yeah.
It seemed very, very broad, but like Joe said, it doesn't have to be like teeth or anything like that.
No, there's no regulatory involvement in it. It just gives some guidance if you want to, you know, there was some guidance about National Flood Insurance Program before the town was in it, and some criteria once you join, you can do some more to get more benefits.
The county already adopted this?
They have not, but I would assume it's probably on their agenda for next week.
And Clay County as well?
Yeah.
Now, would Highlands, would Highlands be?
Highlands would need to adopt it as well. I don't know if it's on their agenda yet.
I mean, whoever put together felt like there was enough public input, even though it was done during the COVID days.
I think it's one of the reasons they slowed it down. They had a public input period a couple of months ago. Let people comment on it. We had a link to this on our website for a year, so people could go and review the first couple drafts. So does the county. So it's, there's been a pretty major vetting process, as it has in the other updates in the past.
We've had this for years, really. Just gets updated.
It's just formalized.
Absolutely, yeah.
Unless somebody wants David to read it for him, I want to make a motion to adopt the resolution.
It's a doozy.
360 pages?
Yeah, it is.
I'll quickly set that motion.
Okay, all in favor? Obviously, there was no discussion. Okay. Right. Update on the skate park request. Mr. Sedsar, sir?
Yeah, so tonight we have our individuals from J. Dunn here with us, and we've met, myself and Public Works Director Nathaniel Moore has met with them, and we've been discussing different sites and ideal sites where we'd like to have a skate park, since we know we've had such a big outcry recently from the skate community. And been in conversation with the county of a couple of sites of theirs, and just want to get some more guidance tonight of what next steps if you want to lock down a site so we can address the county, or you want to stick with one of our sites, one of our town-owned properties, or another private piece of property. We've got, Mr. Colpecker gave us some maps of some that you have in front of you of the Highlands Park, the Waynesville Park, and then a park that, a piece of property that the county owns beside the Dog Park, reference to scale, just give an idea of different sizes.
Is the Highlands Park about half the size of the one in Waynesville? Is that about right?
Almost exactly, yeah. The Highlands is, their park is 5,500 approximately. This is aerial mapping measuring, and Waynesville's about 11,000.
Oh, correction. Waynesville is only 8,500.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Unless they've added on to it, but it's 8,500.
I did the GIS tour. You could be right.
Yeah.
I should have given you guys one of these, too.
That's, that's okay. I think Nathaniel sent us an email with that on it.
Well, that's, that's good news, if that's the case, because Waynesville's a big facility.
It is. It is. When you add 3,000 square feet to the Highlands, that's, again, it's almost doubling the size. But we did look into it and see the size, the different sizes of the skate parks around, and then Waynesville, I was told, was 8,500 square feet, and Highlands is five.
Do we know what size we want?
I was on a Zoom call with some of the skateboard folks a couple of days ago with the Tony Hawk Foundation, and they suggested there's a rule of thumb, 8,000 square feet per 25,000 residents. They said with Highlands being there, 8,000 would be ideal. We may not be able to get 8,000 done, but they said that, like, that's what they would recommend if they were shooting for this community. I think you guys are talking about a little less than that, right?
We were talking five, but again, it depends on where you put it. I did take our grading contractor just to look at the sites, to give an opinion on somebody that actually moves dirt for a living. And our recommendation, as far as that goes, would be to go to your park down here that we first visited. I'm sorry, I don't remember the name, but I'd have to get Nathaniel's help on that one.
JC Park?
JC Park, back up in the upper corner. Measuring it out, you could get close to an 8,000 square foot park, but that would allow, if you went to the other property we looked at, the old drive-in, the trees and everything that's there, the amount of soil and topsoil and trees and roots that would have to be removed, you basically lose what you would have in that tier, and it would be easier to bring soil in down there, place it strategically for now. And, you know, and then whenever you get ready to build, you can go back and sculpt all that soil, and that would be the easiest for you to do.
Call that the Memorial Park or JC Park?
JC Park. I apologize.
Well, we call it about three different things.
Which corner are you talking about, Nathaniel?
So there's one corner at the top of the floodplain. When you come into the park, green building here in the pavilion, you go across the creek, and it's back up in that left corner. Just looking at it, again, what we looked at, depending on what the overall plan would be for the skates, is you could leave that gravel walkway around there and actually create slopes back off of, with that soil, so that you could have a green space back there, but also have the sidewalk or the concrete at the top and anything that you wanted to build, and you could move soil around because it's basically flat, to an extent. You would really wouldn't have to do anything with drainage, because once you took the topsoil off and build up whatever you needed and import the concrete with the contour of the land, the drainage would be there. And one of the concerns, originally talking to the chief, was about bowls, was that, you know, you got to get that water out there, and it's kind of a, if it blocks up, then you've got a swimming pool instead of a skate park. So that's, just wanted to bring that up. I did take him out to look at those spaces, and it would be easier and probably quicker and less money that you would have to spend.
And it wouldn't kill the green space in the middle, or it would?
It depends on how you lay it out. I mean, that's, that's all I can tell you. You would stay on that corner away from the basketball courts, and it would be back in that corner, so you would have some space here. But again, if you build it up with soil instead of building it up with concrete, the back of all that soil could be, still have grass or landscaping or whatever you wanted on it, and it would only be the actual riding surfaces that would be concrete.
Is that area in the floodway or the floodplain?
It is actually what I looked at out of the floodplain.
It's out of the floodplain, so you don't have to have any special permits or to be able to build it?
From what I was, the topo that I got and showed the floodplain itself, it's out of the floodplain.
Good.
That's surprising, but it is what it is.
It's definitely on the floodway. I don't know if it touches the blue or whatever, but that's, that's a land use administrator.
Well, like I said, floodway is the section that requires no ride certification because you'd be building something in there, which is the pink area. The blue is still the floodplain, but per our ordinance, you can build in the floodplain and bring fill in it. You just, we just know how extensive flooding we've had in the past that the JC Park is.
Can we get dirt across that bridge?
That was, that was the big question. I know we get dump trucks across there, the size that you bring.
So are the, realistically, is there a good third choice here? Apparently, there's not a good second choice, according to him.
Whitmire property?
No, I asked, no.
What else you got?
Well, the whole purpose of Memorial Park's always been to serve children anyhow, basically. So I would like to see us make a decision tonight on one of them. So these guys, they're going to be moving on one day, and you've been very gracious with your time and your efforts, and I think we ought to, to vote on a location tonight. I really do.
I concur. I think we should probably have a number one location and at least a number two location. I don't even know that we have a three location, but we should probably put them in order. And again, I don't want to look a gift worse in the mouth, but I want to build the best park we can possibly build for the people of Franklin in a suitable area and not get yelled at a couple of years.
If you don't have to get any special permission, and the ground's already cleared, the JC Park is the obvious quickest place to put it. The other one is a little bit bigger, but like you said, you've got trees and a little bit of slope there, but I did speak to one of the county commissioners who said they were willing to work with us if you wanted to do that. So I think it depends on how fast you want to do it. If you want to do it fast, it looks like to me the JC Park is the quickest way to do it, as long as it's big enough. I wouldn't want to put a small one in there. I don't know what size it'll be, but it'll be around 8,000?
You can get an 8,000.
You can get 8,000 in there?
You can get 8,000.
And Waynesville's about 8,000? Did you say Waynesville's about 8,000?
8,500.
8,500.
They do it by county line.
Yeah, they count the ones on the.
I want to make sure that Bob and I can skate in there, you know, and not fall and hurt ourselves, too much.
I mean, I would be happy to proceed with the JC Park and see if there's any, you know, see if it can be done to our specifications.
Yeah.
If for some reason it can't be, then we'd have to go to a Plan B. I'm not sure I want to lock in a Plan B tonight, because there may be other sites out there that we want, that we haven't considered. But I do agree with, if we're in the consensus that if it would fit our needs there, it's probably not a terrible, I was hoping we could open up some new space myself, some new areas. There really was, but I'll take these guys at the word about the terrain that the drive-in theater.
I'm not telling you it can't be done. I'm just telling you it's just more work to try to get that one at the point. Just having him look at it, he said by the time that they had to dig everything out, then you're going to have a large slope in the back, and you're basically bringing it down to almost where the Dog Park is to get in there. And then, again, 8,000 square feet in that area, we did look at it, that's a lot.
Part of that's sort of like swamp or marsh anyway, isn't it?
Down towards the Dog Park, you're getting down in that area, but up top it's.
Across the bridge.
The other thing that we were looking at is, even if you only, if we all decided here, we're going to, we're going to build a skate park, and right now, this is all we can do, and you're going to landscape later or whatever else, you've still got to have a handicap ramp, and that one would require. Where you're at in that park, it is ADA accessible, so you don't have that issue there. You'll still have to have a sidewalk to get you to it and/or gravel path, but with the other one, the elevation that we looked at to be able to do it, you're starting back up at this road and working your way down towards the Dog Park, so we'd have to figure in a zigzag to at least get you an ADA compliant sidewalk in there.
Could I add, too, that we already have restrooms there, we already have parks there. So those are two things that were already in place. Well, I'd like to, hey, somebody, do you want to rank them? And go ahead and rank them, and let's, let's move on?
My, my first choice is definitely behind the Dog Park, because I wanted to add more facilities to what we have. I mean, we've had one park forever. So I wanted to add more facilities, and I envisioned the skate park behind the drive-in as becoming more of a multi-wheel park, because it's a big enough facility to house a pump track on part of it or a bicycle trail around the whole thing. I like it being by the high school, but again, if, we are not in a financial position to build this thing, and if these guys tell me the Memorial Park's a better park, that it's going to get done, I would have to default to that. But I, I like the other. I like the Dog Park better, behind the Dog Park. It's our property, though, so that, that involves more hoops, and that we have to get county cooperation.
And we've had some discussion about what the logistics of the county, if they were ready, they're at their meeting next week to give it to you. I still think they've got the time to, at least if they were my client, I would be saying to them, if you're going to lease it, you got to say what exactly you're leasing. That means it's probably a survey, it's the best way to do it. And so, I mean, it's, it's going to be a couple of months at least before you, they'd be ready to convey it.
How quick do you guys think you could start moving on it if we go to the Memorial Park?
So for us, as far as getting the soil down there, we have soil on site. Again, that would have to be approved by HCA, but they do have some excess soil up there and get it moved into the position.
I don't think you'll have any problem getting them to give that up to you.
No, no, I don't, I don't foresee that. We have the owner on site. At that point, it's really for us, if you decide this is where we're going and what we want to do, then at that point, we'd like to sit down with members of the town and just walk through the logistics of everything, because there's going to be some fundraising involved and other things I think that happen. But as far as getting it down there, if that's where you went, I would like to get the soil there and be able to let it. It's coming off the truck, and everybody here may not understand what I'm saying, but we'd have to have 98% of proctor whenever we put the soil in. And coming off the truck without any compactor running over it, just running, the dozer over top of it, we're getting 98%. So it's really, really good structural soil. There's just an excess amount of it that needs to come off there. So we could take it down if we had, you know, basic, this is what it's going to look like. We could move that soil into place so that it's ready, and then at that point, whenever you get ready to actually start the work, you can sculpt that area and pull that soil back out and then start deforming or whatever it is you're going to do. So for us, getting it down there as soon as you could, if that's the way you're going to go, so that it could, so it could set and actually be impactable and it's not going to shrink and anything else in the future date, we would like to be able to do that as soon as we could.
How much is it going to cost for a park, a skate park, around that 8,000 square foot? Because you got an estimate on what?
We don't have an estimate on that. So we have reached out to several different companies. Andrews, actually, while he was out last week in Costa Rica, met with the people that own the hotspot. They done the hotspot skate park in Spartanburg, South Carolina. They have actually given him some information on some nonprofit skate park companies that design and things like that. So I don't have on 8,000 square foot. I couldn't give you numbers on it yet, but at least knowing where you want to go now that, you know, we can do more work and give you more information, because before, it depends on where you're at. So.
Are we going to have to have engineered drawings for this?
That's a possibility. So on our end of it, we have people that work for J. Dunn that are looking into what, what would have to happen for us to be able to move forward, and more than likely, it's not going to be engineered. If you're not in a floodplain and not asking us to meet any standards in a floodplain, and there's no engineering involved, it's not a structural item. But it's still, we'll need to have a designer and probably a stamp on it, so that legal liability-wise, we didn't come out here and design, build, and just say, hey, we put our thumb on it, and here it is. We would have a designer that stamped it, be that an architect, local, or whatever nonprofit, we would have to go that route and look at it, and at least have somebody give us a design on it. So that kind of covers everyone when it comes to something came back, yes.
Do we need a skate park designer, I mean, to, to do the drawings and design it out and do the radius of the, of the curves?
So the true answer is no.
Okay.
But again, that's, that's here, again, that's why I want to meet with people here. Is there a local architect that you guys work with or maybe want to be on the boards of local? I don't know that, but that would be it. There is a standard for skate parks, and basically, if you go look at any of them, the reinforcing is the big thing, and it's 16 by 16, number four mats. That's it. The rest of it is just sculpted concrete and the curves.
And y'all have no problem with getting, the guy at Tony Park Foundation suggested, he thanked you, of course, for doing what you're wanting to do, and was receptive to us wanting to jump on this, but he said, you, you know, you make, want to make sure that whoever's building it knows how to get the radius right, the transitions right, not put a concrete break here. It's going to, you know, cause kids to come down, hit that break, and then break their neck. So that, that's why I'm asking. He suggested that it was pretty important if y'all don't know what you're doing. I have a feeling you do know what you're doing. You're, you're confident in that, that ability to get it polished right, you know? Obviously, it wouldn't be broom finish if it's some sort of.
It's just smooth finished. It's, it's not, it's not broom finished, at least going up the ramps and coming back down. The upper parts would be, but the, most of it is just a standard slick finish or burn or whatever you want to call it. Yes, sir?
Fundraising, I heard.
Yes.
I'm not real clear on what, in the end, would the town expect to be, how deeply financially involved in this?
So that's, again, that's where we have the conversation of how much of it, we're here to help you get a skate park. That's what we're here for. But again, to foot the whole bill, that's why we have fundraising. So now, I know where the place is, we know where the place is, and we can talk to different people and get either donate or discounted or nonprofit or whatever it is. We can go through that and figure out what it actually will cost.
I mean, you're hoping to get discounts on materials and such as that.
And, and we will get, you know, like people that, we've got plenty of people on site that are willing to donate their, their labor, come out and do it, so.
But when it comes to cutting checks, is anybody besides us and you?
When it comes to cutting checks, as far as I know right now, no.
Well, I would, I would tell you that we do have the Nana Hala Health Foundation and the Dogwood Trust Foundation, and they are obligated for things just such as this. And I have reached out to them as well, and they.
And they're both nonprofits, I would assume.
Exactly.
And then the reason I ask that, on our, on our part from our legal department, we don't donate directly to the town. It would be, if you ever had a job come up and J. Dunn's name was there and we'd actually donated money to you, that's a conflict of interest. So whatever we raise would have to go to a nonprofit, and whichever one of those, or if it's both of them that you picked, then we could give, you know, earmark that as the nonprofit, because that's the way we would have to go.
I think there'd be some community support. I don't know how much money the, the community would endeavor, but if there were a GoFundMe page or some sort of a rallying cry around a site to build the skate park, some schematics of what this thing could look like. Again, I don't know how much we would get, but I would think people would donate. I think people would donate some amount of money. That being said, going back to number one and number two, it looks like Memorial Park may be where y'all want to go, maybe where this board wants to go. I still think we should have at least one backup and ask for permission for a backup in case we can't get dump trucks over that bridge, we can't get concrete trucks over that bridge. And I don't know what that's going to look like, the logistics of actually building that in that, in the corner. But I, I don't want to waste another month looking for a site. Whenever we're here tonight, we can decide on site one, site two, and try to move forward.
So again, and again, for us, what it's going to look like is, this is, hey, get input. What do you want it to look at? And generally, it would be the people that are actually going to skate on it. Say, what do you want? And this is what you can actually have. And at that point, if someone from the town knows, like I said, an architect that we could just take it to and let them actually design it. And then when it comes to fundraising and things like that, Andrews has talked about more about handling some of that, but how, how we get into that. But as far as the design, you know where it's at, I would ask the community, what is your input? What would you like to see? Understanding that more than likely, most of their court pipes, half pipes, whatever you call it, are only going to be four foot high, kind of like Highlands or and/or Waynesville. You know, there's no large drops in that. But again, what are the things that interest you most? And actually, reaching out to the skate community. At that point, you get a general design, and then we try to find an architect and say, hey, I just need you to throw this down on a piece of paper and say, this is it, because it doesn't require structural engineering, unless we're building elevated structures or something like that. That's the other reason, if you went to Highlands and looked, they have some form work, and that was actually structural. It's freestanding, the, if you look at the, I want to say, the East End, there's a, but it's actually was formed, and there's structure involved in that. Using the soil, you're using that. There is no structure involved. That soil's there. So as, like I said, as long as it meets, and it does, and, you know, it meets the 98% of proctor, it's, it's structural field for all intents and purposes. So you just sculpt everything out of that.
I want to make a motion to move on the Memorial Park. I'm hearing some support for that.
I guess there's still a few questions, and I think David, and maybe this gentleman brought up another one, is, are we going to solicit any input from the people who are going to use it? And if we are, we need to find out how we're going to do that. I did have one more story about one community that wanted to build one of these, and they appropriated a great deal of money to do it, and they never could get an agreement between the people who are going to use it and their design. And so, as a result, it never did happen, and that slowed the whole process down. So if we're going to get input from the people who are going to use it, we need to figure out how we're going to do that and when we're going to do that. We also, I think, if I was one of the people who were going to use it, which I'm not, but I would want to know what it looked like, what's it going to look like before, you know, I give you my two cents on it.
I talked to them, sir. Yeah, sir. They had a display set up here on Town Hall property, and I think they would be good with, anyway, they just want the park.
Okay.
And they do want to, they will take part in it. Nathaniel, do you know who the gentleman is that is sort of kind of working with those children, young people?
I do not. One thing I did reach out to, we had a phone call about one of the skate park design companies that actually reached out to us because they heard that the town of Franklin was interested in doing a skate park. Just on a rough cost estimate, if we did, if we solicited that company to do a design, the first design is somewhere around $7,000, and a set of construction documents with the designs, less than $20,000. So, I mean, that just gives a scope of a complete set of documents for that. And looking at the square footage, they were probably more than the $15,000 range for everything.
Okay. Are y'all opposed to that, having a designer?
No, we're not. We're reaching out to several. I know exactly who he's talking to. There's also a company in Wilmington, North Carolina, that they've built the one in Cherokee. There's another company in Kentucky, and there's one in California. California, they said, yeah, we'd be more than happy to design. We're not coming to North Carolina to build skate, which, which we're not asking. I mean, in all honesty, a lot of it, we would like to do ourself, using our concrete guys, and that's, that's. And that's, that's for us, that's a bigger thing is we actually went out and worked, cause I explained to him, he has not finished that much concrete, but I have finished a lot and it'll be, you know, we're gonna go out on Saturday and do what we do. But again, we're, we're not opposed to that. Uh, if you're trying to save money, again, you could get a local architect just to stamp it. But Andrew still has phone calls to make to a, a nonprofit organization that, that does this and done the one down in Spartanburg, South Carolina and see where we're at. But Nathaniel's right, everybody I've talked to has been right around that twenty thousand dollar range for design. Materialize, the soil's free that we bring down. Uh, a lot of the labor's free. Uh, concrete, we'll, we'll cross that bridge and then I'm in conversations with Southern Concrete. And, uh, of course, like I said, H E A's gonna spend a lot of money over the years, cause they own all these old mission hospitals with Southern and Southern's the only people around, so.
If, uh, if we get a designer on board, will they facilitate what Bob's suggesting here of, of talking to the community? Input for their design and is there, is there time for that?
It depends on if it's a full service design, then yeah, they'll come out and they'll, they'll have banners made up and they'll have a town meeting and, you know? If that's what you want, yes. Um, if not, again, there, there's two ways to look at that. I say that you should ask them and sometimes maybe you don't ask and you say, well, this is what we can do. And you, you put it in because you don't want the back and forth about, oh, this is not what we wanted. At the end of the day, we went up to Highlands and looked at their skate park and actually the kids that were skating there were from Franklin. And they had a couple of comments about the Highland Skate Park as far as the people that installed it. Um, there's some bad, as you said, make sure your concrete's right. They did not use steel tubing at the top. They used concrete and formed it by hand and it was a little bit rough. But as far as they were concerned, we can get a skate park in Franklin, don't really care.
Better than parking lot.
Yeah, better than a parking lot. Or better than having to drive all the way to Highlands, you know, and spend an hour and then spend forty-five minutes driving back. However you wanna look at it.
So maybe David, this might, if I'm, I'll make a motion that we proceed with the J C Park location. And provided that it doesn't throw us any curveballs or unexpected consequences, then we, we go there. If there is, if it becomes problematic for whatever reason it could, then we, our next place to look would be the Drive-In Theater. Since we don't own it, we can't say automatically that's where we're going. But our next choice at this point in time would be to see what our options were at that location. But to move forward expecting it to be built on the J C Park unless some unknown problem arises that prevents it. That's my motion.
Should we tell them, should we tell the county commissioners that and see if they wanna talk about it at their meeting on Tuesday? Do we wanna task them with that?
It sounds to me like there's just so many less unknowns at the J C Park. And less unknowns to me in the end means a smaller check from us. And, uh, I, it wasn't my first choice, obviously the park, but I, I listened to people who've been down there and I'm, I'm okay with it. So I don't think we have to tell the county anything. The county, that land ain't going nowhere with the county. It's like, it hadn't gone anywhere forever. And so if for some reason we do hit a snag and can't put it down at J C Park, then we can go knock on the door again and, you know, and, and dig deeper into it. But right now, I think we go with the idea that it can be done at the J C Park and whatever steps it takes. Have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
I have, I don't, I wanna just in discussion, it sounds to me as though you would like to continue to pursue, not the site, but the fact of the design without going to a designer. Am I correct in that? Little more time on that about?
Um, yeah, well, we're gonna have to have a designer to, to really to cover our bases, both of us. Um, if, if J D Dunn got all of our people and come down and we have the concrete and we board your, without a design, then we're liable at that point, if you understand what I'm saying.
But you're also though exploring that rather than the town just going and getting maybe who Nathaniel had spoken to.
No, I, I, it, it's totally up to however you wanna handle that. If you, if the town says, hey, we're gonna go get a designer and we're gonna bring it in, okay, whatever you wanna do. I'm not gonna tell you not to do that.
But you're still exploring those some that yours talking to.
Yeah, we're, we're looking at a nonprofit, the, the one that, that Nathaniel's talking about actually built the, the skate park in Highlands. And I have nothing against any of them. End of the day, I gotta be a good steward of money and, and I would prefer to take the one that, that everybody's happy with and not the cheapest guy. Cause you know how, I may think of those people, especially if you're town council, you know how that works out for you. But, but again, I, I wanna make sure that we, we do get a designer and one that everybody's happy with.
But you may have your connections with the nonprofit.
Yes.
That we wouldn't be put, the town, if we kinda let you explore that, we might not be putting out.
We might be writing a smaller check at the end of the day.
That's what I was getting at.
I think, follow that up, do we need to write a check right now to pay for a designer or no, we don't need to right now?
No, not right now. Let us have those conversations. Let us vet that and, and again, and see where we're at. Uh, preferably let Andrew speak to that.
Yeah, I think part of our design going forward is based off of location of where we're actually gonna put this. Cause a designer can't put something together if they don't really know where they're putting the design. And our whole goal is we wanna deliver the skate park that the town wants. And we, we're not just gonna go get any designer. We wanna spend money on a designer if that's what's needed and that's what the town wants. So that's why we, we're trying to reach out to these other designers and not just go with the first one we find. It could be way more expensive when we can get maybe even a better product at a cheaper cost. So our goal is, is to move forward with a, a skate park and help y'all bring the town what the town wants.
Well, I would imagine location would influence the design as well, so.
And that, that was the other part about having a flat piece of land and having soil that we can bring in. We can change that around instead of having to excavate to, to, to create what you want.
I like the idea of, of an actual skate park designer as opposed to an architect. So architect's gonna cost money anyway for the stamp plans. At least a skate park designer, um, would have experience ostensibly in doing this. And will do the pipe at the top and can put that in the schematics. And it, it may cost a little bit more, but.
Yeah, it may be. And in understanding on our end of it, it is the actual physical work and the materials that, that we can really help the most with. After the designer and, and the fundraising. We're here to do whatever we can to, to help this come to fruition. And again, we've spoken to our trades and we are talking to the material suppliers that we would need to get all this. We just need a design saying, this is what you want. And yeah, don't have a problem with that. That was actually what we talked, we had a conversation with, with our Charlotte offices earlier today and say, hey, we had to send it on to legal and see how this kinda works for us legally. And then one of them is again, the nonprofit, cause we can't, you know, cut a check to the town of Franklin. Um, the other one is liability for your side and our side and anybody else that works on it. We do need a, a stamped design from someone. Be it an architect, be it a skate park designer, I agree with you, I would rather have a skate park designer. But again, I'm just looking at it from financial, well, what is the, what is the best way to go? At the end of the day, if it's fifteen thousand dollars to a designer and that is the best way for everybody involved to go, then that's, that's the way we go.
I'm second Joe's motion. I, I was just clarifying that.
That's fine. Yeah, uh, Ms. Maxman has seconded Joe's motion. Any further discussion?
I question Justin's our interim manager, our IT guy and floodplain administrator and several other things. You okay with moving this forward? Do you think this is gonna go or are we gonna have floodplain issues, crossing bridge issues? Or you wanna just check it out and see if it'll work?
I mean, we'll, we can, we'll make it work. We'll research it. That's the site we wanna go with. That's where we'll, um, explore. And if something major comes back, we'll cross that and come back. My immediate thoughts of things down there just from knowing is obviously flooding. We all know that, the park floods a couple of times a year. Uh, if it's far enough up, it might not be that, uh, bad. Crossing the little culvert bridge and what the weight is on that is gonna be a concern. And then if you can't cross that, then how are we gonna get equipment in there? We need to build a temporary road. I'm just thinking about this. I'm also thinking of that sewer line that cuts right through the middle of the property that's from the parking lot end. If you're going in there with concrete trucks and dump trucks, is that gonna break that sewer line? I know we've drove fire trucks in there in the past, so that might not be an issue. I'm just thinking of logistic issues that we might, a below ground that we come and we haven't thought about it, we won't. But if that's the site, we will keep moving forward and that makes it really easy. And let's them start working on the design, got plenty of time to plan and go from there.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion and a second on the floor, so no further discussion. I'll call for the vote.
On the favor. Verification, Mr. Mayor. The motion is to go ahead and pursue the site at the J C Park as our first option. If that for some reason is not able to work, uh, then David's recommendation is to look at an alternate site. Perhaps one beside the old Drive-In Theater, which is above the Dog Park. Is that, is that what the motion is?
It's Joe's motion, but yeah, I, I think that was the second side of that, of the Dog Park.
Okay.
As long as you wanna be clear, okay.
Okay, with the clarification, we'll call for the vote. All in favor. Okay, gentlemen, expect that thing to be out and about tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Hey, thank you guys for all this.
We do.
Yeah, we just have taken up a lot of your time and I appreciate it.
That's what we're here for.
Yeah. Thank y'all.
Maybe the new hospital and skate park dissection.
There's no other way to look at it. It's business for the hospital. Oh, it doesn't, it doesn't put me about any, it's funny.
Okay, yes, sir.
Because I've got a couple of avenues to go.
Okay, yes, sir.
If you want to.
Will do.
Yeah.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on. Discussion on Town of Franklin Employee Recruitment and Retention. Mr. Talon.
Yeah, so this is the, um, this is the policy that we presented at the last town council meeting that we went over. It's just a, an attempt to improve retention and recruitment with town employees. It's based on your longevity policy that's already in place. Basically this just adds, um, from employees with five to ten years of employment with the town of Franklin, they would be eligible for a one-time longevity payment of a half percent. That's based on their salary. So yeah, we just wanted to bring that back. If you had any questions, try to answer them. If not, then you may wanna vote on it.
Is this the same as the, with the county employees? Is this similar to the counties or do you know if there's any difference in the percentages or anything?
Um, you don't get it with county until fifteen years, I think. Is that not right?
No, five years, I think with the.
I don't think so.
You're not.
Not longevity.
Not longevity?
Mm-mm, not with county. I think it's fifteen years is the threshold. I'm pretty sure.
Well, it's not necessarily with the county, though. It, it's the total amount of service, I'm pretty sure.
I mean, I couldn't speak to that, but now it's, I know, I know some people that have hit fifteen years and they're just now getting some kind of longevity compensation.
I thought it was ten, I thought it was ten, but, and the state's five, I believe, right?
I know that five years, you're best in the retirement system. This is sort of, the reason we looked at this, we took it to ordinance review. So when employees first start with the town of Franklin, they have opportunities to train, opportunities to get certifications, get increases that way. Um, your employees, when they hit ten years, that's when they're eligible at the current policy to start getting longevity. So in that five to ten year range, that's sort of when we start seeing employees looking at other places or just becoming disgruntled or, you know? We thought this might just improve morale, keep them around longer, uh, try to get them over the hump closer to the ten year mark where they're gonna get a one percent.
They're vested at five anyway, right?
They are.
So you might as well give them a little something when they're.
What, what does this cost a year?
Um, if we implemented this in the twenty-one, twenty-two budget, the total would be one thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars. That's across three funds, including general fund, enterprise and fire. So our proposal was to implement this, if you all do approve it, implement it in the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. So that way it would not be part of this budget that you all approved.
Any further questions?
The state's ten is what it is.
And I may be wrong about the county, but I'm almost, I'm pretty, I was fairly certain that it was for you. Did it, did it get anything until you hit fifteen? I may be wrong about that.
They may have changed it.
So.
And they may, they may, the thing about it is if you can't reduce the benefit, you can't really reduce the benefit. Once you put it in there, once you put it in there, you gotta live with that. Uh, make sure you're comfortable with what you put in there, because you can't go back next year and say, oh, we don't have enough money to do that. Let's, let's back that off. You're causing a lot more headaches than what you bargained for. So the only thing I would say is just be careful and make sure that you're comfortable with whatever number you put in there. And are you talking about going this year or next year?
Next year.
Next July first?
Yes. That way it could be properly voted in.
And the total cost to the county is only eleven, twelve hundred dollars.
Eighteen, I think he said eighteen, which seems, it seems nominal. I mean, if, if we keep one employee, it seems like you're gonna make that up in just training fees and.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
It, it does cost money when you lose employees. Um, you have to pay them out for vacation, you lose, you lose knowledge, you lose training costs. If we can keep those employees, then this longevity policy will probably work.
I think it's a, I think it's a good incentive to try to keep them. And not only do you lose the training, but you lose the, uh, uh, as Travis was saying, you lose that, uh, perspective and that knowledge on, on how you got to where you are right now. And somebody new comes in, has to learn all that all over again. So I think, well, if we can do something and it's not, you know, breaking the bank, we need to try to let employees know that number one, we appreciate them. And not just a pat on the back, but something in their wallet as well. So this is a way to do that.
Well, and like you were, like you were saying, they're vested at five years. You've already got somewhat of an investment with them in five, in five years anyway. So it's not an investment that you wanna lose.
Council member loses, right? By that point, the town's paid retirement. You know, so you are invested already and when you lose them, it's not.
I don't see any major problem with this, especially since we're, we're not, he's not even asking us to put it in effect until next fiscal year. And, and even if, even at that, as David said, is you're not talking about much money at all. And so I would, if it's in order, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this change in our employee, uh, what do you wanna call it? An incentive to stay with the town.
Longevity policy.
As presented and recommended by the, uh, HR director.
And it is in order, sir.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All right, funding request for the TDA, Tourist Development Authority. Mr. Stutson?
Yeah, so, um, we also have Chairman Connie Gruberman in here tonight. She have any questions? But the TDA since is asking, um, to, they're requesting twenty-five thousand from their fund balance to be added to their general fund for the twenty-one, twenty-two budget for expenses. Um, you should have in your, in front of you, you should have some spreadsheets with some figures from the TDA of their anticipated expenses for this, uh, coming up year. And I don't know if Connie wants here is for you to speak, but, um, that's their request tonight.
Ms. Connie, you wanna?
Do you want me to speak? I think you can always speak. Basically, what, what we're asking for is with the fiscal year that just ended, uh, we had money left over, uh, a little over thirty thousand dollars. And so what we're asking of you is that you give us twenty-five of that to go into our twenty-one, twenty-two budget year. In, um, in order for us to get us back up on track now that the world is opening up again. Our last couple fiscal years, we didn't spend all of our money. It went into, um, the fund balance. This year, we'd like to keep some of that from this last fiscal year budget. Put it into next year's budget in order to be ready for people to come back asking us to help fund, um, different events. And different, um, well, just different events going on in town. And we have had in the last couple of months, some new people coming to us asking for, uh, support. And we're giving that support to them. And it will probably be ongoing support in future years, because these are conservancies. And it's a long-range goal for our area, not a one-time event. So that's why we're asking for the money.
So it's, your money is just in another pot and it needs to come back.
That's correct. And we figured we would do it now upfront as, as the fiscal year starts, rather than getting six or nine. getting six or nine months into the fiscal year and then having to come to you and say, hey, we'd like a little bit of that, of our money back out of the fund balance. Just let us have it upfront. I think we've got a very good track record on being extremely good stewards of the money that, that we bring in, so.
Is the fund balance for the TDA held in an account specifically for the TDA?
Yes.
It is? How much fund balance do you have at this point?
We have over $150,000.
And so what you've got, the $150,000, not including what was approved in the budget for this year?
That's correct.
And so what you're saying is you want to use the budget that was approved for this year and add $25,000 from your fund balance to this year's budget?
No, 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 not from the fund balance. Well, yeah, I guess it would be the fund balance because whatever is left over at the end of the fiscal year, that's where you automatically put it. So what we'd like is, we want 25,000 that was left over from, from this, the fiscal year that just ended.
Well, if, if it's not appropriated now, you still have it in your fund balance, right?
Yeah, it's there.
And so if, if during the year, you need more than 25,000, you could come and get an amendment to the current budget for additional appropriation from their fund balance.
Why could I shoot me if we need more than that?
Am I understanding that right?
I mean, very, I'll-
You better address that to people that do understand.
Where are they?
If, if we have a budget for the TDA that was approved when this year's budget was adopted, and the TDA wants to add 25,000 more from that, from their own fund balance, if I understand that right. And, uh, so during the year, they decided, well, they needed more than the 25,000 that they appropriated from fund balance, can they come back and amend their budget again and add more money from their fund balance to their operating account?
They, they could definitely request that. That would be up to the town council to allot that money.
Well, it doesn't look like the June collections are showing or where, where are we at on projected? Do we have a prediction?
We have those in July. So it's not a clear picture now, but if you look on the second page, you can see that the April collections were 14,346. That's the best April that they've had on record. If you look and look at the May collections, it's 16,64989. Again, the best month they've had on record. So right now, just net collections, they've had 117, 705. Their total expenses is 97. So even if you didn't count June collections, they're going to be rolling over, over $20,000 into their fund balance. If I had to guess June collections, I would say it could be anything from 12,000 to 18,000. I don't feel comfortable giving you a definite answer on that.
No, I was just wondering if y'all had some sort of figure in mind?
I would, I would say it's probably going to be good, but again.
I mean, they're going, even if they roll another 16, or they, they collect 16 in July, they're still going to be a little short on the revenues. They're not going to get 20-some thousand to get to their 140 that their revenues was projected at. Well, they were projected at 130 and then we budgeted, I believe it was 10 or 5?
They were budgeted at 135 and then 130.
135. So they budgeted collect 135, their budget's 140. We, when we did the budget, it was, we projected we were going to have to take 5 from fund balance to get them to the 140 for their operating for the season. So they're going to get close to that, you know? It might be 5, it might be 8, they're going to get close to it. So we're going to have to be a little bit on top that they're going to have to roll, so.
Connie, is that why you need it? Because it's, you're short because of the year?
No, it's just, um-
Are expenses up?
She wants some more ammunition.
Yes, you've got it, Joe.
My wife took her daughter-in-law today down to Clayton to shop and eat lunch. Just give the woman that 25,000 you're asking for and try to keep some of the business here, is what I'm thinking.
That's right.
I would agree with that a hundred percent.
It is.
We're really not giving it, we're not giving it to her. It's her own money.
It's her money.
It's her own money.
Yeah.
That's my motion. All right, we have a motion to give the TDA its money back.
Let me make sure I understand this, Mr. Mayor. The motion is to allow the TDA to appropriate 25,000 from their fund balance into their operating budget for the fiscal 21-22 year. Is that right?
If that's what you want to make it?
Yeah.
Is that, is that right, Connie?
That's right.
Okay. We have a motion, do we have a second? I'm sorry.
From the finance part, that's right, that they got the 150s in there.
Yes, they do. They do. And they, depending on their collections, they have, businesses have till the 15th of July to turn in those funds. So depending on their collections, for what they collected for the month of June, I would imagine they should roll close to 30,000, you know, even if they took in about 10, even if it was lower than the last couple months, they should roll more fund balance than what they're requesting.
And I guess I'm like Mr. Horton, just making sure we're not, the town's not putting in 25 more that we didn't budget for out of our-
No, no, this is completely mediated by the TDA.
Intensively, this is a one-time request, so-
Oh, yes.
The next year budget, like I said, you're only, you're projected at getting 135, 140 max. So I wouldn't anticipate this, if you, if you decide to vote in favor of it, this being a yearly, their budget now is 165 from year on out because you don't have the revenues to sustain that over a long period of time.
No. And if there's anything left over at the end of the fiscal year, it goes into the fund balance. So, yeah, we just would like it upfront so that we don't have to hold somebody off because we're running out of money, we have to come to you, and then we have to go back to whoever is looking for support from us. That all takes time. That could take minimum a month, sometimes two months. And then we, we've got to turn someone down when we could have been of help. And all of this is to drive tourism into Franklin and Macon County. It's what we support, so.
My only other thing would be if, I mean, this is me saying if we waited till the revenues came in before we did that, but that's my opinion. With the Ju, with the Ju, June revenue's not coming in, it would just be delaying it till the 1st of August to see what they truly were.
The TDA rep, the TDA budget is based on what the projected revenues are, right? And that's what you've always done. And we expect to get 140,000. We'll budget expenditures of 140,000. And, and whatever it comes in, that's what it comes in at. If it comes in that your revenues, and you don't have any fund balance, or it comes up to 120,000, you've got to look at someplace to cut, I guess, right?
That's right. But we do have the fund balance of 152-something currently, and we haven't dove into that very often, you know?
You've actually got enough fund balance to operate an entire year without spending any of your current collections.
Basically, yes, it's true, which is why we'd like to have it upfront to do some work with. One of the things that, maybe, maybe this isn't the time, but I will tell you, one of the things that we did at our last TDA meeting last month, because it was the end of the fiscal year, we heard three events, events coming up that were looking for support from us. Normally, we hear people one month, we give ourselves a month to digest and think about it, and the following month, we vote on that request. So there's a one-month delay. Because of the way the fiscal year has been, and we haven't spent a lot of the money we had budgeted for events, we went ahead and passed a motion and voted, and we went ahead and funded a couple of events without waiting for that month because we've got that right to do it. It's just that it's not the normal way we like to do business because we had so much money left in, in the budget for events. So not knowing what this fiscal year was going to bring, we figured we'd take advantage of the fact that we had the money available at that time.
I'll, I'll second Joe's motion, but I, I just wanted to say, it looks like so much of the TDA budget has been on advertising and I'd like to see it shifting to quality of life because I think if you make the town and the area awesome for people to live in, people are going to come here. I don't know that people rely on TV ads and billboards and that type of stuff anymore. I think if, if Franklin's a great place to be, people are going to want to live here and people are going to want to come here. Like, I, I think we're discovered. I don't know that we need to tell people about us so much more. I think, I'd like to see if you guys could invest in infrastructure like bike trails and skate parks and that type of thing.
Well, um, so I just want to ask-
Mr. Culpepper, we can't. And the reason that we can't is that when we adopted the tourist development authority, the state told us what we could use the money for, what we had to spend it for. However, the league has that high on their list of things to take to the legislature to where we can use that money, some of that money for infrastructure and taking care of the things on which tourists take a toll on.
That's right.
So, yeah, we, I, I agree with you 100%. We just can't do it.
And so does the board.
But I was going to say, I don't know if that conversation was being had, that, you know, make the place a better place and, hey, look, people are here and they want to come here. I, we don't need that.
I think what the session rule says, if I'm remembering right, is two-thirds to advertising, one-third can be spent on tourism-related infrastructure.
Does that explain the two-thirds?
But you've got to really carefully-
You've got to word it pretty close, so.
One last question with the mayor, was the TDA handle your own bank account and write checks or is that done through, through the town?
Oh, right over there. Right over there.
Okay.
It's a tight-fisted organization, I would say.
And the town has to sign all of the bills and so do I as chairman, so there's a double lock in. And I've also been, since I've been on the board, I've also been chairman of the budget committee for the authority. So I do work closely with the town in determining the budget that, that the TDA approves.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Connie?
Very much.
You got it, okay. All right, fire substation. Mr. Sutser?
We have a request for extension of time.
Yeah, looking for is just a motion from the council, just to grant a tight extension for, for western builders on their substation. They are dealing with issues, as pretty much any builder's dealing with, getting material. And you should see in your packet the request that our architect, Tom Ritter, submitted on their behalf, where they're running into issues is some of the building support beams and the metal studs for inside the building, they just can't get right now. So they're asking for a 42-day time extension on their 120-day completion. No money is included in this change order.
But this- I have to say, well, I reviewed the contract, so I don't opt for a delay that's out of their control. You got a pretty argument, they're just entitled to take the time anyway, so just, we ought to be grateful they're up there.
Exactly, I don't know what we can do.
Well, and then too, this relieves them of any threatened liquidated damages they have to deal with, so I don't see any reason for them not to have this because I know, working on a few projects this year, building materials have been really hard to get.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second, okay?
Two seconds.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. Okay, the next item is a discussion on ABC referendum for the election ballot. And I'm not really sure, we, here's the situation. We have a situation where some, or one of our restaurants particularly, wants to have an alcohol question outside. We cannot allow it under the present ALE laws. So what we had talked about, we could only grant this not through local ordinance, but through a referendum of the people. So we talked to the Board of Elections and they thought, sure, we could have it at the same time as the municipal election in November. Turns out, there's some conflict of whether we can do that or not, of whether it has to be a separate election, which would cost the town a bundle of money to hold an election just for one alcohol question on the, on a referendum. It's the type of thing that we never thought of when we passed the alcohol referendum years ago, and every year, it, it goes up a little bit more of the different type of activities that people want to have around alcohol in commercial establishments. So that's where we are. I thought maybe we would have it on the agenda for tonight, but I don't think that we are in any position to do it now.
Because, and if I understand, Mr. Mayor, what I thought we found out from the local Board of Elections was that the timing we missed out on was apparently there's, and I don't know where this, not in statute that I've seen, a 60-day notice to the State Board of Elections before you put it on your ballot, which we're running up against the, the ballot deadline that our local board is, is working with, Board of Elections. But now they're being told you had to tell them by May 16th, they're 90 days out, so that obviously didn't happen.
I just don't understand why we're having an election and all they have to do is to print a second ballot, yes or no on this alcohol question, but we're in limbo. So I'm not so sure that this question's not a moot question.
See the attend item in two years, or maybe not.
I'm not sure it's moot. I don't think it's right, but to that, there's no, nothing we can do tonight. That's, that's where I guess I'm coming from, Mr. Allen Gill. Okay, Mr. Culpepper, sir, you're up with the discussion on a pathway around the wetland.
Speaking of TDA funding, this would be a great, great use of some TDA funding.
Yeah.
If, if it's applicable. I gave, I gave you two printed-out maps. One was for skate park and the dog park, and that didn't work, so maybe this will work. Of course, I think I'm in the wrong boardroom because both of these ideas involve county property. Yeah, I've traced out a map on the, I think we're calling it the wetlands down in East Franklin now, behind the big Barrett Park, between the Depot Street Extension and, and Main Street there. The Frog Board, which I get to go to, they're wanting to build a birding memorial-type thing to Barbara McCray overlooking those wetlands because apparently she spent a lot of time there. And I suggested that I don't, a birding platform is great, but I, I don't think it's big picture enough. I'd like to see something a little more, a little more done there. So as long with a, a birding platform, I'd like to see a, a walkway around those wetlands, maybe even through the wetlands, and that's what the pictures are on the, the last three page with some pretty cute kids on them for scale. The, the first picture is the Cachers Crossroads Park. I think they call it the Village Square, something along those lines in Cachers. But they have an elevated boardwalk through, through a wetland and it, it's really neat. They actually have art installations along it. And the second picture is the Highland, second and third is the Highlands Biological Station. And they have an elevated boardwalk through parts of their wetland and pond area at their biological station. It would be an asset to our town to have something like this and a way for people to access something that a lot of people call an eyesore. I mean, that's a judgment call, whatever. If, if you want to go bird watching, it's, it's an asset, or if you want to walk around, it's an asset. So anyway, I, I know that we can't do anything funding-wise, but I'd, I'd like to show frogs, maybe by consensus or whatever, that there may be broad support for doing this path. Part of this path is in our bike walk plan and our comp plan in connecting Crawford Branch, Greenway Spur to the Greenway. So this does accomplish part of our stated and adopted goals. I, I, anyway, my goal is to show frogs that there would be broad support for such a project. I don't know if there's funding from us or if there's support from us, or if our planner or engineer, if it all would involve them, but I'd like to see it happen.
Who owns that property, though?
The county.
The county does? The county does? Is...
Bitterly fouts on it forever.
I don't know.
Willie Hayes on it. It's a committee, it's a county now.
To do any, to do this, would you have to have a permit from the Army Corps?
Possibly.
You're probably going to run it, I mean, is it considered a wetland? I mean, is it classified federally as a wetland?
It's a relatively new wetland, so it may be classified, but I mean, you are allowed to put, I mean, elevated walkways.
Well, I know that, but there's a ton of regulations that go along with it, too, so...
There is. I know that the state is more lax on walking paths through floodways and floodplains. I don't know if the Army Corps is or not, or what you have to show them. There's probably parts of it that are more sensitive than others.
I think this would be a splendid addition. I would hope that the county would be on board as well, and we certainly don't have a clue how much it's going to cost, or whether it's really feasible, but if you're wanting to suggest to them that, you know, you didn't get shot down, ain't no money, raise your hands, but maybe it's something that we could explore and then see ways to do it. I like the thinking on it, I really do.
They talk to Audubon Society at all at this point, or?
Maybe, I don't know. Like I said, I know they're, they have plans to build the birding platform. I wanted to add to it and make it bigger. I don't know, I'd love to call it the Barbara McCray Birding Trail, or something like that. I don't know if it'll get that far, but I think it deserves something nice.
I think it'd be great if everybody come together and bring it to fruition, oh, it'd be wonderful.
Have the frogs folks talked to anybody from the county about this possibility yet?
It's in infancy right now. I mean, it really just started getting discussed at the last two, three meetings.
You just asked me, like Joe said, for support to pursue it and see...
That we wouldn't put our foot down and say, this is a horrible idea, get it out of the conference room. Like I said, I don't, I think, certain folks don't realize the support that would be there. And I want, I want folks to realize there would be broad support for this type of project. I wanted to bring it to our board, and whoever else wants to hear about it, and see if we can actually get the ball rolling on this. An idea's got to start somewhere. Might as well start in the boardroom.
I think it's a novel, innovative idea.
A good memorial to Barbara, I mean, that.
And I'm not asking for funds, but I would think that we could possibly fund this in some fashion, with some nominal amount of money.
Go back and tell them he's still alive.
Okay, looks like you got your motion there.
There you go.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Skate park? A wakeboarding park in the wetland.
You know, the boardwalk just down at the Arthur Drake was built on the height of Charles McLaughlin and Dick Moulton.
And that's a similar wetland, I would think, and that boardwalk is there.
And that's why I was mentioning, it's a great, needsome repair, it's in bad shape. Okay, legal, Ms. Ting, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and council members, I'm bringing back for your consideration and hope for adoption tonight two ordinances that I presented to you last month that do some fairly routine things in terms of cleaning up ordinances. 2021-006 has to do with just some hangars on from prior to your adopting the manager form of government, having to do with who appoints the police chief and how fire department, departmental rules are adopted, but putting both of those into the manager's purview. And so if you have any questions about that, happy to answer them, and if you want to take them one at a time, a proper motion would be to adopt the ordinance as presented.
That's the way we've been operating anyway, Craig.
Basically, yes. Yes.
This just puts it right, I clarify, in case there's any question that may come up in the future.
And it is passed the ordinance review committee.
Yes, sir.
Are we voting on both of them, or just the first?
Let's take them one at a time.
I'm sorry, I see now the others, warning citations. Okay, somebody want to make a motion to adopt it as it's been presented?
I'm making a motion to adopt the ordinance for police and fire corrections, as presented by the town attorney.
And I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Mr. Mayor, the other one, I think also is fairly straightforward, 2021-007 has to do with your general penalty for violation of ordinances in the town, as I told you last month. Chief Harrell actually brought to my attention that you could read the way it says to give a warning citation first as sort of mandatory, and I think he's right when he says there ought to be some officer discretion in determining whether a warning is warranted, or if you should go straight to a citation. So again, just recommend it for adoption as presented. Happy to answer your question.
We have a motion. Is that you, Ms. Ting? Okay, do I have a second? We have the second, all in favor. Moving right along, let's run around the table real quick before we get into the announcements. Ms. Horton, sir, do you have anything that you want to bring up, sir?
I don't know of anything in particular, appreciate the boards working together. I thought, I like the fact that we don't have to stay here all night for a board meeting. I appreciate that very much. And the only thing I would say is, under announcements, it says that the presentation movie for this week's will be Princess Bride. Princess Bride? I kind of like to see that movie called What About Bob? I don't know if it's on the agenda or not. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I suggested Doctor Strangelove.
Oh, did you?
That's the one I think that, I would love for people to see Doctor Strangelove, because that was in my heyday.
Yeah, that's...
You've come to love the hydrogen bomb.
I'd have a Slim Pickens Club in town.
Okay, anything else, Ms. Horton, sir? Mr. Lewis?
Fabulous job of fireworks, thanks to everybody involved and all the police and fire that have, came out and helped us, and we appreciate everybody. It's just an absolutely wonderful thing.
Don't leave out Public Works, they were right in there, too, so...
I had a hill in my view, can we move that for next year?
Yes, sir, I think we can.
Can we?
Hey, you're the right age.
Take that dirt.
There you go.
Anything else, Mr. Lewis? Okay, Ms. Pashford?
No, I just echo Mr. Lewis's.
Okay. Ms. Culpepper?
Two things. On that birding trail around the wetlands I talked about, I just did a quick calculation. A sidewalk's, I think, $35 a linear foot. I mapped out about 2,000 feet. Of course, it's not a sidewalk, most of it would be gravel, some elevated walkway, but if it were the same price as a sidewalk, it'd be $70,000 to build that trail. That includes permits, though, anyhow.
Yeah, it's four feet deep down there or something.
Oh, drive pilings in there, you'd only have 300 feet of elevated walkway. Anyhow, the real thing I wanted to talk about during this is Reach had their disc golf tournament at Sunnyside. I think they raised $8,500 in their first charity event. I think it's worth noting, that's more than we spent for the facility, and I think it's worth noting, we took quite a bit of heat a couple of years ago for 86 in the community funding pool, one of which Reach was a beneficiary of that. This type of project, outdoor rec projects, this disc golf course, any other future rec that we hopefully build, that type of fundraising would allow them to get $8,500 in one shot. That's more than we'd ever give them in a year in the community funding pool, and that's one tournament, the very first tournament there. I mean, that's the kind of thing we need to be looking at to help our community and help our nonprofits, is by building facilities that benefit the community and can ultimately benefit them and benefit the people that rely on them.
We'll see. We'll see. Okay, Mr. Collins, sir?
David took my time, I'm good.
Okay, so under announcements, our next council meeting will be back on a Monday, August the 2nd. And the next, oh, here it is, Mr. Horton's already talked about the Princess Bride, and so, anybody got anything else?
We do have, we do have a meeting this week, though, don't we? At 5:00 on Thursday, a follow-up with our consultants.
Yes, notices went out today, I think, to the media and all that.
When is it?
Five o'clock.
Thursday, 5:00 in the year?
Yes.
Same bedtime?
Same, same type of thing.
Yeah, I bet you mentioned that, Jim.
Yeah. Okay, thanks to the media for sticking with us tonight, and I don't know if y'all noticed that Bernie was here tonight?
Who's the juror?
Have a motion to adjourn.
So, second.
Second, all in favor? We're adjourned. Now, Bobby, you can take your Bernie and go home. Did you see that, Dave?
Yeah, I did.